Good morning. It's April 30, 2019, and I'm calling to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors, and I would like you, if you would like, to join us as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now have public comment number one.
And, excuse me, my mic wasn't on. Now we have public comment number one, and this comment period is for the public to address the topics on today's agenda. And if anybody would like to address a topic, would you please move over here to the chair? Seeing nobody, we'll close public comment. And it's my pleasure to read a proclamation today. And this proclamation recognizes May 5 through 11, 2019, as Public Service Recognition Week. As somebody who all her working life has been in public service and has worked with very many wonderful people in public service, as I say, it's my pleasure to read this proclamation. Public Service Recognition Week in honor of the millions of public employees at the federal, state, county, and city levels. Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working. And whereas public employees take not only jobs but oaths, and whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, Border Patrol officers, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others, risk their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and around the world. And whereas public servants include teachers, doctors, and scientists, train conductors and astronauts, nurses and safety inspectors, laborers, computer technicians and social workers, and countless other occupations, day in and day out, they provide the diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity. And whereas, without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now therefore, be it resolved, we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, Story County, Iowa, do hereby announce and proclaim to all citizens and set seal heretofore that May 5 through 11, 2019 is Public Service Recognition Week. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contribution of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt this proclamation. Any discussion?
Just a heartfelt thanks to all the public servants who show up every day and do a great job and care. Thank you.
Rick, do you have anything?
I'm good.
Okay, then. Olson?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. The proclamation is adopted. And also, just to notice that next Wednesday, May 8, from 7:30 to 9 o'clock for our employees, we will have a recognition breakfast here in this room. And please, all employees, do RSVP if you plan on attending, hoping to see you there. Now, next, we go to agency reports. Hartland Senior Services Annual Report, Nancy Carroll. And thank you for agreeing to come this week rather than last week when I originally had you scheduled.
Oh, my pleasure, and thanks for having me. I always enjoy coming over and kind of giving you an update on the status of Hartland Senior Services annually. First, we want to thank you. I sent this report over to you previously, and I think the big highlights that I just want anyone to be understanding of is that Hartland serves those 60 and above. And in multiple different ways, we have a budget of about $1 million, of which Story County, you contribute $105,000. So that's huge, and appreciated. And so what are you getting for that investment? Approximately 22% of the seniors that participate in our programs are from greater Story County outside of Ames, so about over 400 people. When you add Ames into that, it's a total of over 1,800, unduplicated. So again, we're serving a lot more people than, but that's individual lives. And we do it in the areas of activities that are just for very able-bodied, active seniors. We want to continue to make sure they stay that way and actively engage socially. So we do a lot of fun in inviting things there. Our Adult Day Center, I think you all are well aware of the important service that is, we're a locked medical unit for up to 30 people a day. People that come have some form of Parkinson's, Alzheimer's, something that limits their ability to be home unsupervised or cared for during the day. And we're seeing younger folks, you know, even we have some in their 50s. And so if you can imagine, if you're the spouse or the caregiver of someone in that age category, you still need to be actively involved, maybe at work or within your world. So again, it's really critical. And our participants go up into their 90s, so it's a wide range that we serve in Adult Day. Nutrition, again, very, very important service. And one of the most exciting things that continues to go so well is when we did combine our meals with Mary Greeley providing the meals, Hartland coordinating the delivery of those. And that tags into then our outreach services. The outreach services are to go out and meet with seniors one-on-one in their home, to say, what can we do to connect you to existing available resources that you were unaware of to keep you aging well in place? And so when we then took over those additional, about 50 meals that Mary Greeley had been doing in Ames, we all of a sudden, with our outreach specialists, were going into every one of those homes and meeting with them and assessing their whole life, not just if they needed meals. You can imagine, that's the jumping in point, if you need meals, what else is going on in your life? So outreach has been able to do some amazing things, since there were some great stories of changing people's lives through the Meals on Wheels delivery of that service. So lastly, and again, thank you for your vote of approval for the Healthy Life Center funding. The most recent information we have is, and we need some from you folks, I think even as of today, we're hearing that now at the state level, there could be a question of how many special elections can be held? And the City Council on May 14 was going to establish August 6 as the vote date for an approximate $28.6 million bond referendum, because the other 20 million is being brought philanthropically and from all of the partners. So now, we just are hearing before the State Legislature left officially, there could be some questions about the voting of special election frequency.
That's what I understood. You might want to check with our auditor?
Well, Diane Voss, who is the City of Ames City Clerk and an expert, as I know, working with your expert staff, to say what happened. And there's just, I think, behind the scenes confusion yet. But again, and understandably, the legislature just did this, if they did, we're not sure yet, last week, so. But other than that, so we'll put that aside, that will be dealt with. But the City Council continues to unanimously and enthusiastically publicly support the Healthy Life Center moving forward with this bond referendum being held in the near future, whatever that means, from the state of Iowa.
Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you all very much.
Any questions?
No, just keep up the good work. I know that you are faced from some of your funders with reduction in the monies, and I know that's tough.
Yeah, we're heartbroken with that. But we're not expecting necessarily anything different from the federal government moving forward. Times are just getting tougher, but we will continue to do whatever we need to do to provide excellent services to our seniors. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. And now we'll have a report from Mid-Iowa Community Action and Health Services.
Thank you for this opportunity, this annual opportunity. We have to come before you and talk about our work. I'm going to give a little overview of what agency-wide has been going on, and then we have Josie Stalen, who's going to be here to talk about family development services in Story County, and then Gloria Simons will talk about our health services. And we're just going to hit some real highlights. She has a written report that you can refer to, some extensive numbers on that work. The first thing I want to say is, you know, MICA serves as its core county's hardened marshal Tama Powashikan story. And last July, in Marshall, there was the EF3 tornado. So for MICA, that has meant sort of an all-hands-on-deck for the last, well, continuing even now, where we've had to pull a number of people, both Gloria and Josie, and some of our staff from Story County had to go over and assist us in that effort. We lost our health clinic in Marshalltown, it was destroyed. We had damage to our family development center. Luckily, our administrative offices were about a mile off the path of the tornado, so that survived, and none of our Head Start centers were affected. But that has been probably our priority in the last year, both our own work internally to deal with the effects of the tornado and then assisting the community in its recovery. I also want to bring up that the agency's engaged in two sort of transformational efforts, two things that we want to be a part of the culture of Mid-Iowa Community Action, and we have staff teams who are working on both of these efforts throughout. One is to become a more trauma-informed organization. We've invested in a lot of training and staff meetings and efforts to help our staff become more aware of ACES, its impact on the children and families we serve, and strategies for addressing that. We are also working with another agency in Marshalltown, looking at the possibility of trying to create a more community-wide approach to trauma-informed practices. We are also, have been a model at the national level and are working at the state level on two-generation or whole-family approach of practices, which puts an equal emphasis on what happens for the child and what happens for the parents of that child in terms of their development and the path out of their poverty. In Story County, that might be most particularly seen in our work in FADs, although our Steps to Success program, which is funded by ACIT, is also going to be impacted by that emphasis on working with all members of the household equally. Overall, our funding has remained fairly stagnant. I think that's probably a story you'll hear, although I think we're fortunate that we haven't seen it go in the opposite direction in the last year. We're pretty stable in our funding. And the last thing I'm going to say, I announced my retirement. I am done August 9 at MICA, after having worked there 42 years, 15 years as the Executive Director. So the posting of that job will go out today, and there is a search committee working through our State Association Executive Director's search process to find my replacement, but it's been a joy. I was at the first ACIT meeting ever, so.
Oh, my.
I can tell you all about that if you ever want a history of that. With that, I'll turn it over to Josie to talk about current day affairs.
Hello, I am Josie Stalen. I am the Center Manager for our Story and Harden County Centers. You have the written report in front of you, which I highlighted a number of services that we offer out of that center in Ames, but I will just talk quickly about the emergency food pantry and our Steps to Success program, which are ACIT-funded programs. Our numbers are remaining pretty steady but high at the pantry. We serve an average of over 300 families each month that come in for food. And I guess some highlights with the pantry, we're getting excited for summer, for our partnerships with the area, plant a row to get some produce in, and we also have some just independent farmers that bring those items into our pantry, which is nice for families utilizing the pantry to get some of those more healthy options in the summer. We've just wrapped up a large food drive from an area church, and we got a donation of over 12,000 pounds, which is really exciting. And then we're gearing up for the Live United Food Drive as well, which we're always excited for, to get our pantry stocked for those summer months when the kids are out of school. Steps to Success, we continue to employ the part-time specialist that serves, her full case old is 10. So for the date range that you've provided, we've served 12 families and have provided 89 home or quality visits to that program. And then also, I did include on the back of the report just a success story from that program, so I think it's important to highlight the impact that that one-on-one work with families brings to Story County.
Good morning.
Good morning, Gloria.
I'm Gloria Simons. I think I know all of you. I'm here to update you on the ACIT-funded programs, ACIT funds the Children Dental Program, which are vouchers that we are able to provide dental care for children who are uninsured. So since July 1, we've served 45 children with 52 vouchers, because we put a dollar limit on the vouchers, but some services and treatment required to, as you know, dental services are expensive. So we are, since March, we have been out of funds. We funded all the vouchers with the funds that were available. Fortunately, it complements a Title V program we have, which is a little more restrictive, but we're still able to pay for some dental services for children that are uninsured. Fluoride varnish, we have provided those services to 42 children, and those funds also have been expended. The good news is about the Story County Dental Clinic. For the first time in a while, we are fully staffed, and it's made a huge impact on our efficiency and our ability to plan services, so we're very excited about that. We still are serving, about 30% of the visits are preventative visits, so those are people that are coming back to receive preventative service and aren't restorative treatments. And that's what you really want to achieve, is to be a preventative home for the Story County population. 46% are children, and 7% are over 65. Iowa is very fortunate that it has expanded Medicaid, so that 20- to 64-year-olds are covered under the Dental Wellness Program. That program continues to change over time, and we try to adjust according to those changes. Many dentists, many private dentists are not, and they are terminating Medicaid and DWP patients. We understand that the North Grand Dental Clinic is no longer taking Medicaid and DWP, and they sent a letter to their patients referring them to Story County Dental Clinic, which is fine and lovely, but one of the things is the Story County Dental Clinic is never short of patients. And there is a time that we can't be everything to everybody. So we're moving forward with that. I wanted to share with you a note that just last week, one of the patients provided to our staff had said, I've been bringing my two kids to the Story County Dental Clinic for several years now, and they are awesome. We are so thankful to have somewhere to bring our kids for good dental care. They are great with the kids, and our kids have no cavities. So, and that's just an example of how the patients are viewing the services they receive at Story County Dental Clinic. The other thing I want to point out, too, is although some facilities are taking Dental Wellness, they're not doing dentures. And because of some negotiating that we did with the lab, we're able to continue to provide dentures, because dental facilities were losing money, the reimbursement rates weren't even the price of the dentures. So we're moving forward with that. We have a limit to how many we can do, but I'm really proud of the fact that we're still able to do that.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board members, comments?
I have a question. How many private dentists are still taking Medicaid anymore?
That's an interesting question, in that I've been to meetings where there are private dentists, and many of them will indicate that they're taking Medicaid, but when you try to call and make an appointment, they're not accepting any new Medicaid. I've asked IME to give us an idea of how many dentists actually submitted claims, and how many claims were for like 500, and how many were over 500. And I think that would give you more of an indication of which dentists and which practices are really taking Medicaid. Now, that's easier to get than, say, Dental Wellness.
Thank you, because I know it's so difficult for you guys.
Yeah.
Any questions?
No questions, but I do have something I would like to say. So, you know, one of the beauties of being a supervisor is you get to serve on lots of different boards, and you get to work with lots of different groups and lots of different groups that provide outstanding service to the public. I have so enjoyed my time as part of the MICA board, and I'm going to tell you what, you talk about an exemplary organization, that generally, when an organization gets as large as it's necessary for MICA to be, you see inefficiencies and you see some issues where you don't feel like it's necessarily the best use of dollars, and couldn't be further from the truth with MICA. This is a spectacular organization that makes Central Iowa better, and I just need to say, there's a huge void that's coming in August. And it's a great board, and I'm completely confident that the board will identify a great individual, but no matter how good that individual is, nobody's going to come anywhere close to Arlene in what she's done for MICA and our entire community. And so I just need to take an opportunity to say thank you, and so appreciate everything you've done.
I would add to that. I thought the other day, I was talking about somebody who was a dedicated, was public employee in that case, but dedicated public servant, and I said, you don't tell dedication, you can't measure dedication by what somebody says, you measure it by what they do. And I know you have shown it again and again, in, what, 42 years?
I started the next.
Yeah, I did too, I understand that. But no, that's a significant career, significant commitment that only you and the people who work with you really know, and thank you from all of us. And enjoy your retirement, you'll have lots of new challenges. Okay.
And I would just add significant impact.
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. We will move on then to the minutes of the April 23, 2019 meeting. Is there a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion, then we'll vote. Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Consideration of personnel actions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Olson?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Consideration of claims?
So moved.
Second.
As presented.
Okay. Discussion, none. Then, Olson?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. We'll move on then to item 10, public hearing items. Consideration of...
Consent.
Consent. I apologize, consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Now, we'll move on to public hearing items. Item 10, Lisa Markley, consideration of Resolution 19-102, FY19 budget amendment.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You feel like you got it all wrapped up in here, Lisa?
Yeah, until Linda came to my office yesterday and told me something, and I'm like, well, I guess I might amend it again, so.
May or may not, we'll talk about it.
May or not, we'll see.
Not today.
Good. We do have one more month, basically, in case we need to, but hopefully, this is it. This amendment was, the proposal was published in the paper on 4/18, all three newspapers, as required by law. Overall, the revenues are increasing by 3.5% approximately, or 1.5 million. The majority of that, that's from the last amended budget in August. The majority of that is the million-dollar bond proceeds. Expenses are being increased by almost 10%, 4.6 million from the August amendment. Big-ticket items in this amendment are secondary roads construction, part of our own nature trail, which I might add is showing as an expense, amended in as an expense. The revenue in FY20 budget, it's reimbursable, so it looks high now, but it, most of it gets reimbursed. The regional payment to the mental health region, the continuing of TELC, purchases pulled forward from the 20 budget requests, and the remaining salaries, we only budgeted 95% of salaries, so I'm doing my best swag to make sure we're going to get enough in there for salaries for the rest of the year, so. After this budget amendment, the unassigned general fund ending fund balance is about 24%. Our policy is 25%, so we're a little under. We typically come in a little higher than we anticipate, even at this point in time, so I think we'll be okay at the 25, we'll end up above 25%. The rural fund is coming in at 14%, secondary roads at 34%. So overall, we have about $16.9 million ending fund balance. Of that, 7.4 is restricted funds, 1.5 is committed funds, 2.9 is assigned funds, and 4.9 is unassigned. Any questions on the budget amendment? All the documentation came with it when I asked for permission to publish, so.
Could we go back to the fund balance for the assigned?
Uh huh.
Maybe I misheard you, but we show here 3.1.
That includes the committed in the general fund. So the committed and the assigned together are what you're seeing there.
Okay, so the committed that shows under the 1.39...
Hold on, let me get my...
Okay, I just, you were, the rest that you read off were very close. I mean, I understand that your numbers change a little bit even after publish, but that was where I was surprised with the assigned, unless I heard the number you read wrong.
So there, in the general fund alone, there is unassigned of 4.9, and I'm rounding here.
Yes, and that one showed exactly.
There we go.
Yeah.
The 3.299 that is showing in the general fund is, 1.8 is assigned and 1.3 is committed, okay? And then we have general fund assigned dollars from jail inmate commissary, county fine collection, and conservation land acquisition. Those are all considered general fund assigned, even though they're special revenue funds.
Okay, so that, I think, is where the difference is, because what shows on, what was published was 3.1 instead of the 2 point, unless I heard a number wrong, you know, like, I don't hear everything right all the time, out of ear of mine. So if you go to fund balance assigned, the number you read...
On the publication?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I mean, I heard two, so maybe, see, as I'm saying, without making a huge deal of it.
What was published is what it was that day.
Thank you, okay. All right, thank you, okay.
Any other questions?
None.
In that case, I'll open the public hearing. Does anybody in the public wish to comment on the proposed amendment? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve?
Move or approve.
Second.
Okay, second. Any other questions, comments? Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Okay, then we also go into additional items. We have consideration of Resolution 19-103.
So this is the appropriation amendment, so that we can spend those dollars that you just amended. What I've done on this appropriation amendment is appropriate all the remaining dollars in all the departments. So the by-department information that I gave you originally was for amendment, this is for amendment and appropriation combined, okay? The elected officials already had been appropriated 100% of their dollars, but the remaining budgets, or departments, had not. This is, I'm doing it all at once, because it's, probably makes more sense in coming back and appropriating the dollars in May and June again, so. Any questions?
Move or approve.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thank you very much.
It's passed.
We will now move on to item 200, additional items, discussion and consideration of announcement of tourism funding for fiscal year 2020. Supervisor Olson.
Okay. As we had our budget discussions in January this year, we discussed increasing the amount that we would allocate for tourism-related events and activities, is how it's worded right here in this draft announcement. But we left it very open about how people would apply, who would qualify it, what the requirements would be. And so, working with LeAnn Harder... apply, who would qualify it, what the requirements would be. And so, working with LeAnn Harder, I said, "LeAnn, can you please just draft up what an announcement would look?" Because one of my key points and feelings here is that if we have the money, we need to announce it, that we have the money. Because in the past, what has happened is only one entity has really been aware that we give money, and that has been the Iowa Games. And then the Convention and Visitors Bureau, we do pay their fee of 800 and something every year to belong to the Central Iowa Tourism Association. They know that. But other activities, other large events have not been aware that the county supervisors would provide, or they could apply for funding. And when RagBri came, I talked to someone from the Convention and Visitors Bureau and said, "I believe there was some money there." They then came to the county and asked for some special money. It turned out that the money, we had to take it from the general fund that year, but that, and it went to three communities to help with their publication, their promotion efforts. However, we still have not let the general population know that we do fund, would be willing to look at funding some activities. And the one that comes to mind for me and that I've been using all along is Special Olympics. It's unclear to me how we can fund the Iowa Games every year, but not have Special Olympics know, being the same type of event, being the same scope of event, and the same, not necessarily the same level of economic impact, but certainly being very similar, that Special Olympics does not know they can come to the county. And I verified that by talking to their fundraiser, one of the fundraisers that works with Special Olympics here in Story County, Jan Williams. And so, back to this announcement, since we have put more money in the budget, I think the fairest thing to do is to put out to the public, all members of the public, that we do have some money available. This draft lays out all that we discussed and we settled upon in January. You will note that it seems very vague, and so there could be a lot of groups who come and apply, or certainly would pick up the phone and call whoever we designate as the contact person, because it's blank there right now. So as set up, it just says it's based on a first-come, first-served basis following the beginning of the fiscal year. So I've, so I brought it forward after LeAnn brought it, created it, to say, do we want to put, do you want to change anything in here, first of all? And then, second of all, asking, could we please announce to the public that there's money available? Right now, I just don't think we're handling it in a fair, transparent manner.
Discussion? Or should we have a motion first?
Either. See, so I'll start-
Let's just talk.
Yeah, so I'll start with discussion. I think this makes it appear that there's $10,000 available, and there's not $10,000 available. I mean, it's, there's some money available, but it's more like $4,000 that's available.
We budgeted 10 as of fiscal year 20.
And how much of that is already committed?
None. That's the whole point. Fiscal, we're talking about starting July 1. We're talking about the fiscal year 20. This is not fiscal year 19. And really, we haven't, by committed, any in fiscal year 19, we have, this was part of this, about Iowa Games is getting $4,000. They just automatically get it. I come back to how unfair that is. I think that other groups don't get an opportunity to apply for the money, where it's an assumed with Iowa Games. But we did in fiscal year 19. That's how we approved the budget. But in fiscal year 20, we said 10,000 on a first-come, first-served basis. If it still says in the budget book, 4,000 for Iowa Games, that was as, I think that was an overlook as in such groups.
Yeah, I don't think that was an overlook.
I don't remember us ever pledging $4,000 for Iowa Games.
So let's just listen to our assistant auditor on this.
The one thing I do want to mention is, Rick's point is that annually, we get billed $700 from the Central Iowa Regional Tourism.
Okay.
So I know $700 is committed every year.
Okay.
To be part of the regional tourism.
Without, without them having asked for it. So is that what your point is, that there's 700 that we are giving? Because they can just ask for it every year, and we give it, or we can do a standing.
You are part of the Central Iowa Regional Tourism Committee, or Organization. And as being part of that, you pay $700 a year because of that.
Okay, so that's kind of more of a dues-type thing.
Correct.
All right. So there's $9,300.
And $400, or, excuse me, $4,000 is invoiced from Iowa Games annually.
So if Special Olympics sends us invoice for $4,000, we'll automatically pay it? That's my problem here. I did not vote to give Iowa Games automatically $4,000.
What we have in the budget is $10,000 for tourism. That is how we put it in the budget.
Correct. But there are more tourism events that come to this county than Iowa Games. And that has been my, I've been on this, if you will, for three years now about how unfair this is. And we don't promise Iowa Games that money. They just invoice it. And so that is my point. And if we went back and we listened to the audio, I'd like to know, we're in the audio, we, the three of us, agreed that Iowa Games would give $4,000 in fiscal year 20.
Yeah, we need to go listen to that audio, because I believe that we recognize that there was $4,000, that until this board, until a board, uncommits from that 4,000, that 4,000 is sitting there. I'm not saying that a board of supervisors can't say, "No, we're not going forward with this." But until and unless a board does that, which we haven't done, then we are committed to $4,000 per year for the Iowa Games.
Who committed us, who committed this?
Wait a second. May I? May I suggest that we do look back at this and see what the original motion or the original action was, and whether that was continuing?
Yeah, I don't know that there was a motion and an action. It was in the budget work session.
It was in the budget work session. So for 20, do we have-
So in the budget work session, what I recall us talking about is increasing the amount. Historically, what, that amount has been $4,700 every year.
Right.
We budget 6,000. We spend 4,700 every year, with the exception of the year, last year was RagBri went through, and this board of supervisors, or the board of supervisors, agreed to give some additional dollars to the three cities that ask for it. So we budget, like I said, this is coming out of the 40% local option sales tax dollars, just for a little perspective here. We budget 6,000 a year. We spend 4,700 a year, and that's what we do. Now, we, in the discussion for next year's budget, from my recollection is, we decided to put $10,000 in that line item, fully aware of the fact that typically 4,700 is what's spent, so there's an additional 5,300 to do as you guys see fit, as it comes to you. And that's, that's what I put in the budget for next year.
But we said, and what, and yeah, we do need to go back and listen exactly, because I asked LeAnn to go on what came from the outcome of our discussion in January. It was first come, first served for the money. And there, I'm not aware of any, as Lisa said, any formal motion that we ever said Iowa Games gets money in perpetuity. Can we go back and find that motion by the board of supervisors that passed that?
Now you're changing the finish line.
Let's not talk over each other, please.
Now you're changing the finish line, Loris. So I tend to be in support of what you're talking about doing here. I just want us to recognize where we are. And if there is a decision by this board that we're not going to support the Iowa Games anymore, that's fine, but we need to take that action, because this has been since, what, 90?
I went back, I went back in the minutes, no, excuse me, I went back in the board files for as long as I can go back in the board files and found nothing.
Yeah. And so if the goal is to stop supporting the Iowa Games, that's fine, but let's talk about it in terms of that. Let's don't try to change the rules. Now, if what we're talking about is trying to support, this is where I thought you were, Loris, if what we're talking about is trying to support more events coming, Special Olympics, I've heard you talk about a music festival, I've heard you talk about different things, absolutely. If that's the goal, then I'm fully on board. I just didn't like that it appeared to be couched, that we weren't going to live with what I view as an ongoing commitment by Story County, until and unless Story County rescinds that ongoing commitment. And so, it can be semantic if you want to, because you and I were in the exact same meetings, and we heard two different things, clearly. But I think we are absolutely committed to the Iowa Games until action is taken, decommitting Story County from the Iowa Games. And I just think that should be reflected in here. And if that's not what we're talking about, then I think we need to take a step back and have the full Iowa Games conversation.
Okay. So-
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Lisa, you said, I just want to clarify now before I forget this, okay? You said you went back as far as you could in the files, and you found nothing. Nothing in terms of what? What were you looking for? Some kind of a-
I was looking for some sort of a action of the board that said, "We will, we will support this."
That we have an ongoing to support to the Iowa Games, and you could not find anything?
No.
Okay, that's what I wanted to understand for clarity. Thank you.
And when the, was it the National Special Olympics was here? Does that sound right, Deb? Help me out. We gave money to that. We, the board, made it, made an, had a motion to give money to that. That's not obviously an ongoing. It's when it happened. Did we not have the National Iowa Games here, or the Winter Iowa Games here also? Yeah, I can't remember. But, but it hasn't always just been Iowa Games that has gotten these dollars. There have been actions of the board to give more dollars. When I say it's $4,700 a year, I say typically it's $4,700 a year, but you can, I can go back and see that we've given to other tourism-type events also.
So we really have a couple, a couple questions.
I wanted just to respond, would be impossible to him. Okay. All, what I believe is the fairest thing to do is, it's not that we're excluding Iowa Games from applying, but I believe that each entity should have to do an ask in writing every year. So then the asks come to us on the agenda, one by one, and then we approve them. So that doesn't mean Iowa Games would not get money. It would mean that Iowa Games would be held to the same procedure that everybody else who could ask for money could. So, Rick, I heard you originally, the question was about the $10,000 amount. This sounds like we have 10,000. I hear about dropping it to 9,300, because yes, we are paying our Central Iowa Tourism dues, so thank you for that. But I feel that Iowa Games should not be treated any differently, any more special than Special Olympics, or if maximum Ames applied, or whoever else applied. That's what I'm asking for. Not to eliminate Iowa Games, but to eliminate an automatic assumption from Iowa Games about just shit sending us an invoice, that they instead do the same ask after the first of the fiscal year. That's what I'm asking.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And do you have any other?
Yeah, I, this, I mean, I think, I think that that stance, while I completely respect that stance, I think that requires some kind of action from the board that we've never taken, that's never been on our agenda, to rescind our ongoing support of the Iowa Games.
Okay, now I'd like to say something. When our assistant auditor says she finds nothing in the files regarding a continued commitment to the Iowa Games, I have to conclude that we cannot prove that the board acted to, to create a continued commitment. My personal feeling on this, and I was wanting to make everybody else talk first, I have two feelings. One, I think that we should let the Iowa Games know that we would appreciate, that we would like them to come to us annually with an ask, because we don't have anything that justifies what we're doing, is what I'm seeing. Secondly, however, I'm not sure about creating yet one more funding opportunity. I see we have lots of funding opportunities that we currently do advertise. I also know that a lot of groups come to us and ask for money without us having a specifically established funding opportunity for this, or that, or the other thing. I think Special Olympics probably knows now, through your efforts-
Through my efforts.
Through your efforts, that they could come. But I think if we start looking at every single entity that wants to ask the county for money, and every time we create a new fund, we're just going to be hamstringing ourselves and really committing a lot of monies to specific purposes, when we may need them for general purposes such as roads. And I've gotten a lot of calls about roads lately, and I know our engineer has. So those are my feelings. Before we wanted, we're going to vote, I wanted to get a chance to give you my feelings on these issues, and that's it.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
For what you just said. So it's okay for Iowa Games to come and ask every year? That you feel comfortable that they have to do the ask every year?
Personally, I do.
Okay. So if Special Olympics then came, like you said, they are now aware, and I will let them know again, all right, that they're, that they should come to ask. But what about the other groups and activities that also bring large numbers of people from outside of Story County?
And some of those, like RagBri, we do not have every year.
Right.
So why build those kind of things into a proposed budget? I think as those come up, people can ask for those.
Okay.
That's my personal feeling. I just feel like we're getting too many cubbyholes, too many different pockets of money that we're reserving for this or that, or having so many places for people to come ask us for money. I think people know that the county is a funding source for lots of things, or can be.
And one of the things that, the reason I said that these funds are part of the 40% local option sales tax, is that the board makes the decision, no, the money goes there, and it is for the general county betterment in the unincorporated area. So what that means in my world is that since it's coming out of the rural fund, it needs to be the, how do I want to put this? The rest of Story County out in the unincorporated areas' contribution to whatever the event is. Okay? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I think so, but let me clarify. You're not saying that it shouldn't go to an event that's being held in Ames or another incorporated area. You're not saying it has to be, okay.
No, I'm saying that the, when you, when we spend rural dollars, we spend rural, out of the local option sales tax dollars, it's for the, for the general county betterment in the unincorporated area, or for the unincorporated area, which has meant, over the years, that if Ames is having an event, Iowa Games, and our contribution represents what the rest of, what the unincorporated area is putting toward that.
Okay. So could I ask this phrase a little differently here in my mind, that definitely should benefit people in the unincorporated areas? So like, there would be athletes participating in Iowa Games, athletes from the unincorporated areas, most likely, athletes participating in Special Olympics, most likely. Those are the two, once again, that come right away. And so if the board were to follow what Linda Merkin has said, Supervisor Merkin has said, is that they all come, one by one, we don't have an announcement to anybody, "Come on down, okay, with a pot of money," but everybody can approach, and then we would make each decision once, one by one, on funding? And that is what Lisa Markley is saying in part, that if it's rural money, rural people should benefit? Is that a summary?
The definition of what you can spend rural money on is primarily intended to benefit the unincorporated area. When the 40% local option sales tax went into that rural fund, one of the things that we determine is, first of all, is it, is it benefiting primarily the unincorporated area? And all I'm saying to you is that think of the dollars that you're putting toward it as the contribution from the unincorporated area toward whatever event it is. I'm not saying that we should go through and say, "We have this many rural athletes, and we have this many blah, blah, blah." What I'm saying is that it's, the board of supervisors' contribution- What I'm saying is that it's the Board of Supervisors' contribution for the unincorporated part of the county.
It could be funded from a different fund, then, also. If...
If the determination of the Board is to pay for tourism out of a general fund, yes, it could be.
Okay.
But that's where we have budgeted it since I've been here, a long time.
So, is...does it make sense, for purposes of action, to bifurcate this, make it into two separate issues? One is to deal with the support of the Iowa Games, and the other to deal with the support of the resolution or the program announcement?
Well, if you...I think if you accept Supervisor Sanders' assertion that despite no formal action by the Board, that our continued funding of it over and over again, I said, if you support that way, which is what I'm hearing, as he says, then we are going to continue...we would continue with this until we make a motion to deal with the Iowa Game situation. I don't buy that we have obligated ourselves on an ongoing basis, since there's never been a formal motion. It's just something we have done, but I don't see that as being a contractual obligation to them. Or binding, or a vote, saying, "We're going to fund them every year." So, that's my answer there. It's, I guess, how do you view this?
I guess I'm just suggesting that the best way to clarify it might be in a motion.
Okay.
If we want to do that.
Yeah, you can't do it today.
Yeah, we can't do it today. We'd have to bring it back.
Okay. Put it on the agenda for next week.
So, if we're going to put it on agenda, I would simply ask that Iowa Games be given dual notice and the opportunity to appear. Loris, I didn't suggest anything, that we were contractually bound or anything like that, but precedent is on my side here. If every single year since the, what, early '90s, Lisa?
Yeah, and I want to just say that I didn't spend days and days and days going through all the files, so that there could be some action somewhere. I just couldn't locate it when I went to look for it that day.
But what I'm saying...what I'm suggesting, Loris, is that for years and years and years, many, many different Boards that didn't include any of the three of us, this has happened a certain way, a certain way, a certain way. I think that precedent speaks more strongly to my position on this, that if we're going to change it, which we absolutely have the power to change it, that we need to do it in a thoughtful, formal way, get as much input as we can, and change it.
Why is Iowa Games so special as opposed to Special Olympics? I really struggle with this.
Absolutely. And I get that you struggle with it, but what I'm saying is, I'm looking at the precedent of the way things have been done, and I'm suggesting that if you want to change that precedent, which we are empowered to do, there's a process that doesn't include trying to whitewash whether we're doing it or not. Let's just deal with it head-on, and if we want to do it the way you're suggesting, that's great, but it should be on an agenda, and we should deal with it upfront. We should give them an opportunity to come speak to us about it. And then, whatever we do, we do. I just...I didn't like that it looked to me...I didn't think that's what it was. I thought it was a mistake. Now, it appears to me that we were trying to slip something in to exclude the Iowa Games or to make Iowa Games...
I'm not trying to slip that in to exclude the Games. I want them to follow the same procedure that everybody else, and everybody need to know about the procedure. Thank you very much. All right.
And put it on the agenda for next week. We can continue the discussion, then.
Okay, thank you.
And now, getting back to...
Before we do...Linda, would you mind reaching out to the Iowa Games and letting them know?
Not at all. I plan to do that.
Could we reach out, then, also to the Special Olympics and to Maximum Ames and some of the other groups to let them know if they'd like to come and speak to...about the situation?
Maybe I'm confused with what the agenda item is.
The agenda item was simply going to be whether the Iowa Games was going...my thought about it was whether the Iowa Games, whether we were going to have a continuing, or whether we were going to ask that they come every year.
Ah, got it.
I was not trying to table the agenda item that we're on right now.
Okay, thank you.
I have no intention to do that.
Okay, all right. In that case, I mean, no need.
Okay. But we still are on Agenda Item Two. Is there a motion?
Well, I'll make the motion. That we include this, that...make the motion to approve this announcement, subject to the Chair appointing a contact person after the fact.
And so, I'm not going to second, but I'm not going to second, not because I don't...I came into this supporting this idea. I just thought there was a misrepresentation of the $10,000, because that's not what I believe is available. Now, I'm not going to second it, because I think we're putting the cart ahead of the horse. We better figure out what's going on with Iowa Games before we do anything like this, because we don't know what we're actually offering, if anything.
I agree. I mean, I do agree, yeah, with that, but we could...what I would like is, then, the Chair...
Hold on a second.
Yeah, I've got a motion.
And no...
We have a motion on the floor.
I was just explaining why I'm not second.
Right, right.
Okay. Motion dies for lack of a second.
Would it be possible for the Chair to think about who might be the appropriate contact person? Or would you like Leigh Ann Harder and I to continue to work on that? Or Leigh Ann Harder and Deb Schildroth maybe abdicate to that?
Contact person to do what?
If, in fact, we end up sending out an announcement so that all activities know that there's some funding available, so that all...
Well, we didn't approve the announcement. The motion to adopt it died for lack of a second.
But if we go back and decide what we're going to do about Iowa Games, I would like to bring this motion back. I do agree with Rick. I probably, in making the motion, it is premature. We need to decide what we're going to do with Iowa Games. So, I'd like to bring this back.
You can bring your motion back later.
Yeah, bring this back later.
Certainly.
Okay.
Okay. Then, thank you for the discussion. We'll move on to Item Three, under Additional Items, Discussion and Consideration of Resolution 19-98. Emily Shoneman.
Okay. This is a residential parcel subdivision in Union Township on 340th Street, outside of Cambridge. It's A1 agricultural, in the Ballard Community School District, Cambridge Fire, and in the South Skunk River watershed. And it is designated as agricultural conservation and natural area in our C2C future land use plan. This is the subject property. So, you can see, it's at a corner of 585th and 340th Street. And this is the proposed division. Let's see. So, there's an outlot proposed. It's 13.69 net acres. It is north of Lot Two, which is a proposed 19.42 net acre lot, which is...and that's considered buildable for a dwelling. The outlot is not considered buildable. And then, you have proposed Lot One, which is approximately three acres and contains an existing single-family dwelling. In 2018, a permit was issued for that single-family dwelling on proposed Lot One, so again, here, as well as this pole barn. They had initially requested to divide off the farms, an area to build that house prior to constructing it, but they did not mean any exceptions to our 35-acre requirement to do so. And so, the residential parcel subdivision process allows them to build a house, go through the subdivision process, to split it off after it's constructed, and create a second lot. This is a family member of the property owner who has built the house on Lot One. Lot Two doesn't have any current plans to build another house. It will just be in agricultural production for the foreseeable future, although it is buildable. And Outlot A will also remain in agricultural production. So, proposed Lot One has frontage on 340th Street, and it takes access off 340th Street. Lot Two, as you can see, has a frontage on 585th and 340th Street. There is a farm access at the corner here. The county engineer noted that if any new access was proposed for Lot Two, if something was built on it in the future, they'd need a driveway permit. But this access is also used to access Outlot A. And so, the applicant indicates that they will reserve an easement for access in the case that the separation of ownership between Outlot A and Lot Two occurs. But in the meantime, it's the same owner, and that's how they'll access the farm fields, through that existing farm field entrance off 340th. This is the map of the natural resources area on the property. You can see there is a creek that flows through the property, so there is a 60-foot wide easement that was provided as part of the subdivision for the creek. There's no flood plain, though, in our current maps. There's a little portion up here on Outlot A with the proposed maps that will be adopted in 2020. Some cropland was taken out of production here for the construction of the dwelling on Lot One. However, Lot One is about three acres, which is a very small portion of this entire site. So, Outlot A and Lot Two will remain in agricultural production. With a residential parcel subdivision, there's no further divisions that can occur. It is protecting both the farmland and the natural area through those restrictions. And we do have the protections for the natural area if any development were to occur in the future on Lot Two, requiring mitigation requirements if significant trees are removed, that kind of thing. So, adjacent properties to the north is the Calson Family Subdivision First Edition. So, this is the Second Edition, and that is actually an agricultural subdivision. There is one dwelling to the northeast, as well as to the east. To the south, you have Jasper County. We did notify property owners within a quarter mile in Jasper County. And then, to the west, you just have agricultural parcels. In total, there's nine parcels with single-family dwellings within a half-mile of the subject property. Otherwise, it's large agricultural parcels is mainly the character of the area. I won't go through the applicable regulations, but we did route these...the proposal to the interagency review team, as well as the public, on April 9th. And then, cities within two miles, both the city of Huxley and Cambridge, took action to either waive their right to review or approve the subdivision request. And so, again, all requirements for a residential parcel subdivision plat are met by this request. There is an existing dwelling that was constructed in 2018, and this subdivision is proposed to allow them to have the dwelling located on under 35 acres in the A1 agricultural district. There's no further development proposed at this time, although Lot Two is buildable. And Lot Two is how the farmland on Outlot A is accessed, so the owner will get a blanket easement for access to those farm fields on Outlot A. This is agricultural conservation area, but the subdivision proposal is within the principles for that area, and mainly it's larger agricultural parcels with a few single dwellings adjacent. So, with that, we'd recommend Alternative One, which is approval of the Calson Family Subdivision Second Edition, Resolution 19-98. The family's also here today, and I can answer any questions as well.
I think it looks pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I'd move approval as recommended in Option One.
I second. Discussion?
None.
Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Thank you very much for being here. Okay, we're moving on to Department Reports. Sue McCaskey, Animal Control. Sue here?
If she wants to...
Oh, okay.
Oh, there she is.
Oh.
Yeah.
Hi, Sue, and would you introduce your friend?
Hello.
This is why you said you weren't taking a dog home. Somebody else. Who said they weren't taking a dog home?
Come on over. It's a really good puppy, but even naked. A little antsy.
I'm antsy, too. So, oh, yeah. I'm not even a puppy.
Okay. Okay, so, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
So, start off with just a few statistics for you, and this is going to be number two on the agenda, especially vet's appearance. The dog's name is Zephyr, so we'll just that minute. So, the total animals in the shelter right now, the cats are down to 144. That sounds like a lot, but it's down. It's down, down, and we're really happy. We've had a lot of adoptions. We're at 12 dogs, two rats, four rabbits, and a snake. And our volunteer hours during January were 53.8. In February, they dipped way down to 14.5. However, in March, April, we had a resurgence of 82.7 and 120.1, respectively. So, with our remodeling, you know, kind of winding down, and now people have a place that they can go and everything, it's just...it's made it a lot better for people to come in. And...oh, there's mine, there's mine. Hands off. It doesn't mean you can't go get it. So, this is...this is actually...this is actually Zephyr. Zephyr's mom was found on the interstate. She was a 12-pound, wire-her terrier. She was traveling with a little red dog who was 10 pounds. This guy brought her in. She was very pregnant, and so, we had a foster home that he went to, and mom had six babies. One of them died, but she had five. And it's funny, because she's only 12 pounds. The puppies look nothing alike, and they're going to be probably 40 pounds. We're looking at just like probably wool and snow. We have no idea. All I can say is that it's probably...this is a true, true 1957, but great dog. Great dog. Yeah, and he's very ITY-like. He's so socialized. He's a very good dog. So, if somebody was looking for a dog, he would be awesome, and he is...well, his face tells it all.
I promised Callie I can't come home with a dog.
Okay. I tried.
I'd kind of like to talk about what's happened recently, as far as things that we deal with at the shelter, as far as issues of animals that come in. So, we have...I brought some things for you. This is actually kind of a sad thing, but this is how...this is why we're trying so hard to fight against animal abuse and neglect. So, this is off...
Oh, no.
...of a dog that came in, and the dog was so matted, it was blood down to the skin when it was tried to be removed.
Yeah.
This is off a one dog, came off in three pieces. And this dog could not sit down to potty or lift its leg because the hair was so entangled. It was awful. It was terrible. So, anyway, it's kind of like bringing people show and tell items, because, you know, it's funny out there when people talk about animal abuse, neglect, you know? This is part of it. It's not just the fact that they're tied in the backyard, or, you know, that they're not getting cared for on a daily basis. This is part of it, too. This animal was suffering when it came in. And he went on and got adopted, and I'm just going to...these might be...I don't know, but I'll pass these around. So, we've had a kitten that came in with this. It's a Cudariba, and it's a tiny little kitten, tiny little kitten, and it was peeking its head out of the kitten's little hole in its neck. Went in and had this taken out of the bed. That's a pretty big thing to be in a little tiny kitten. And same with this one. This one's smaller, and it was a different kind of Cudariba. And then, this is your typical roundworms. And, you know, again, the show and tell stuff, I can pass them. I really want to see it. But what I guess what I'm trying to say is, you know, this is the kind of stuff, when we tell people about when they come into adoption at the shelter, and they're going to get new pets, and they're looking for stuff, we try to tell them, "These are the things you look out for. Keep your dog groomed, keep it vaccinated," and all these other things. And we've got more specimens that I hope not bring, but we kind of keep these for our show and tell, because I don't think we get egg classes, and I don't think a lot of times when they're talking about a Cudariba, nobody ever really knows what one looks like. And this, when you think about the size, do you see this kitten? And this coming out of its neck, moving, it was like...and the kitten actually feeling is doing well. So, that's kind of a success story, I guess. So, why do we span neuter? Well, I've got the most recent things out on that, and so... And so, this is the newest chart that's been made available, and it says, "An unspayed female cat and her mate and their offspring producing 2 litters per year with 2.8 surviving kittens per litter." Okay? In one year, you start off with 12. Okay? So, and at 5 years, you're at 11,801. This is, you get this 2 cats at the start. By 7 years, you're at 370,092. And by the time you reach 9 years, you're 11,606,000. That's how much damage can come from 2 cats not being spayed and neutered. So, that's why we are advocates of it. We're arranging to have a clinic set up coming up, hopefully, that we're going to do some spays and neuters on some cats, because right now they are our biggest problem. And we're going to set up something so people that have, especially ones that are outside that see constant breeding and are having those issues, we can go take care of. So that's why we do it. I also, on number 5, there's a correction. I had put a basket in ahead for fleas, ticks, and flies. I meant to say rabies. So, the ticks and flies are the, the ticks and fleas right now are rampant. People don't even realize we're kind of, we're part of May, and they're already rampant. And so, we're seeing a lot of those coming in. And so, when you see a tick on your dog or cat, or if you see one, there's much more to it. They can cause Lyme disease, they can cause paralysis, they can cause pneumonia, serious infections. And this is something that people, this is something that people can share. They can get this. So, if you're out on a hike, you know, sure, you check yourself, but mostly check your pets, too, because they're, they're going through a lot with that. We are called the April, or the April to November as far as fleas and ticks. So, that's when we are most likely to see those in our population. Now, that being said, if we have a warm spring or a warm coming over the winter, it could be, could be longer. But animals, fleas on animals, by the time it reaches the fall, are 70% higher than they are in the spring. So, that's an active flea colony. So, when you pull the fur apart, you're just seeing black debris, or you're seeing all these little critters, they keep multiplying and multiplying, and they can actually kill your dog. There's so many things that can happen with that. And it's the same way with ticks. I mean, we're seeing a lot of the ticks come in. So, ticks can be proposed for up to 7 days, and they drop off. I don't know if you've ever seen them, but they're big when they drop off, and they can consume 15 times their body weight of blood every day off that animal. So, again, that's another reason. Get those, get that stuff out there if you need to treat them. This is what we see in the shelter, and I like to just kind of be proactive and talk to people about it. And we're heading, we're just heading into that time of year. The other thing is the rabies. So, just an example, in 2009, there were 35 total cases of rabies in Iowa. And at that point, it was a pretty good, there were cattle that had it, cats, bats, dogs, and 35 for the year. Okay? And then it went down to 31 in 2012. And we are lucky we live in the county because we can take stuff over Iowa State at any time, have it tested, and we do that. If we have any, any at all reason to do that, we will do that. But last, in 2017, which is the latest statistics, there were 10 rabies that were, that were...
Cases? 10 cases?
Well, there were 10 affirmed cases of rabies in Iowa, 10. And that's really good. I mean, that's awesome. We're never not going to have it. It's just something that carries from state to state. There's other parts of the country that have it worse than we do, but this is, again, something that is near and dear to me, is vaccinating the animals. We've had a lot of dog bites lately, and, and dog attacks on other dogs. So, we're having to quarantine animals because they are occurring on the rabies shots. So, you know, again, if you stay ahead of the game and get them done, you know, if a bite does occur unless it's a really, really vicious attack, you know, then you don't have to impound your dog. So, there's just a lot of good reasons to do these shots, and a lot of good reasons to do the treatments. Different vets will tell you different things about fleas, ticks, you know, and they're going to give you different medicines. I know there's some out there that are causing severe reactions in dogs, so, you know, just, it's what we're dealing with, and we get free ticks and fleas that are given to us. So, we make sure that the animals are, are taken care of before they leave. So, the shelter remodel update, so we are like task excited for this. So, it's close to an end, and I'm just going to kind of read what I wrote here. It says, "We are in the end process of throwing away what we know we won't use. I'm loading the pod and getting everything in its place. Weather permitting, the pod will be emptied this week. Everyone is getting settled in their own little nips at the shelter, and our cat adoption room is moving, which is evident by our numbers that have dropped. Our busy time of year has begun, so we adopt cats out, and then as soon as we adopt 2 out, we get 3 in." But again, that's what we're there for, and we are having adoptions. We're staying ahead. So, when the painting and other things are done through Facility Management, which, by the way, have done an outstanding job of helping us, they have really done a good job. You know, they picked up a lot of, of the smaller jobs and really worked with us and helping us getting them, that we do appreciate it. But anyway, we will then get our pictures and our benches and everything. We're getting corporate benches for our shelter, so that'll be kind of nifty. They're coming out of an old boardroom, and it's like recycle, recycle, and the benches we had before were recycled, and so we just keep on recycling. We're not picking, but the benches, I have to tell you, are very nice for us, so we're going to be pretty proud of those. Our dog and cat socializing rooms are a huge asset. We didn't know how we got along without it before. It's so nice for people to pick up an animal, or we have them take, we help them take an animal into a room where they can socialize with it, and, you know, they can find out which animal they really do want to adopt. So, that's been wonderful. The outside dog runs have been wonderful. We're able to put dogs out there for exercise that normally just got walked every day, and now they're out there, you know. If we ever get nice weather again, then we'll be able to put them out, you know, in the sun during the day when it's not really hot, let them frowling around and have fun. They love being outside, so this is a real asset, and, and it has been wonderful. There are also exercise pens, like I said. So, we're really anxious for the concrete. Show me knows about that. So, it's kind of muddy out there. We don't want to discourage people, so just find a nice grassy place, or if you come out to visit, or find a place that isn't in the hood. Unfortunately, we had a really bad winter seasonal, and then spring hasn't really helped that, and so we're waiting for that. We now have a handicap bathroom. I mean, these are things that may not sound like a lot to you guys, but this is like everything to me. This is great. So, we have a place for people to use the bathroom, and we also, through the help of our shelter supporters, got 2 sets of used washer and dryers. So, now we have 2 of those set up, 1 in the new area and 1 where it was before, and now we can have laundry going, and we're not stacking it up for a week at a time, but staying ahead of the game. That's been wonderful. Our ventilation system is great. We are breathing fresh, wonderful air. The animals are, too. And so, I got to tell you, when this whole remodeling thing started, I thought, my God, we're spending so much on ventilation. Is it really that important? We need to, you know? No, thank you. It has been such a difference, and people coming in noticing. And so, it has been a wonderful mission for us, too. We're planning on having our house, our open house at this point on June 28th, and, which is a Friday, and, you know, we're going to have door prizes and games, and we're going to have food, or we have cat food. We're going to have, it'll be a fun day, and it'll be a good chance for everybody to come out and see all the work that's been done at the shelter, and why we are, as employees, are so proud of it. Everybody is so proud of this place, so it's been great. And, and that's, if it quits snowing and raining, okay, that's, so that depends on those 2 things, but hopefully by then it'll have both out of it. We have fundraisers coming up, and we have a lot of them, and we just got called about another one this morning. So, on the 18th of May, we, we have a shelter shinday over at C&amp;K. They've been doing this for several years. Gets from 10 to 2 on that Saturday, and there are rabies shots given for $10. There's trimming nails, there's, you can put it, you can have a chip put in for identification for only $35. So, everything over there is really reduced. There's food, free world offering. We're there, the age shelter is there, we bring stuff, we bring animals. This year, we're having baby goats and rabbits, and we'll have dogs encounter. So, it'll be, and everybody loves to come, and we see the same people every year. We've had people calling, they love to take advantage of those cheaper shots and getting the microchips put in. Chase and Tails is June 15th of this year. That begins in Roland at GI Jill's, and then it's motorcycle ride. Last year, I think there were over 100 bites, and they are taking a route that kind of will take them down to Collins, Elkhart, Cambridge, and they stop each of these places. There's prizes given, and it's a good way for us to make money. Last year, they raised over $6,000 for them, so that's a big fundraiser for us. Muffins and Mimosas, this is new. We don't know what this is or what to expect, but that's at Collins, and we're going to be heading down that way on June 22nd. Hopefully, on June 28th, as I said before, we'll have our open house. We have Delveda, the farmer's market, on July 13th. That was a good fundraiser last year, so we'll be going to the farmer's market that morning with animals, and, and Delveda's going to put that out for us. We have one that's going to be in July. It's called Our Place Pub and Pizza, and it's on the, I call it the Kelly Blacktop, but it's, it's kind of, just right outside of Kelly, to the west, and they've had new ownership, and apparently they have serious crowds on the night that they have ban. So, they're expecting to raise, you know, a good deal of money for us, too.
What was that date?
For that one?
Yeah.
It's to be determined.
Oh.
Yeah, they're waiting here with, when, they want, they have a really big ban that comes. They want to get confirmation from them on which day it'll be, and then we'll have it agreed to that. But we will put it out on our Facebook page and everything. And then we just got called this morning from another organization that we'll respond to. So, seriously, we have a lot of fundraisers coming up. This makes me really happy. People that know me know that I worry a lot about making sure that we have enough, so, and people have been very gracious to us. I feel like, you know, when we're getting called all the time, we're now in the process of collecting prizes. We have baskets and everything. We have out for all these fundraisers. We can either do a silent auction, or people can put tickets in a bucket, or whatever works, but it is a good way for us to make that extra money. We're hoping with all these fundraisers that we can bring in probably around $15,000.
Great.
I mean, that's great.
It is wonderful.
So, that's all I have.
Good job, Sue. So, just one thing to note, so the June 28th is also the grand opening of the Todesco Environmental Learning Corridor. And so, I would just ask that, in my mind, it's fine that we have 2 things going at once, but if there's any areas that supervisors need to be present, please coordinate between the 2 to make sure that it's not...
Right. And it's not to say we couldn't change it. We kind of arrived on that in between fundraisers and the 4th of July, and that's kind of, you know, so yeah.
I'm not sure exactly what conservation has planned. I just know that it's occurring on that same day, and so just...
Have they put out their times or anything?
Yeah, they, I think so. I think they have.
And I think they don't start until 1 o'clock, so talk to them.
Okay, we'll be doing 10 to 4, so hopefully they have everybody an opportunity, but yeah, I will check. So, okay, that's all I have right now.
Yay, thank you. Thank you. Very interesting and informative. Okay, then we move on to other reports. Discussion and direction regarding Story County's floodplain management program, Leanne, Jerry, and Deb. All your names are down there. Leanne, start us off.
And what animal did you bring for us this morning, Leanne?
I was about running home and grabbing a sadie.
Yay, okay.
Sweet old Herbert. Do you guys want to come join me? Will I bring the, our point up?
Is that microphone on?
Yes. Okay. I did not go in and change the date, so I'll just start by noting that we intended to be here last week. When we get to the discussion, the schedule, I don't think delaying today's presentation will affect that greatly. I just want to start with that. So, what we're here for today, and I'll let these 2 jump in wherever they want to, just to give you, set the stage for the, the transition of floodplain management responsibilities or portions thereof from me currently as a county outreach and special projects manager, back to planning and development. So, the presentation, I'm sure you've had a chance to look at online, but we can get CRS points if I go through the entire thing. I'll do briefly, though, but I, it's an...
Let's get all the points we can. Absolutely.
That's right, okay. Those that know me know I'm passionate about floodplains, and so anytime I have a chance actually to get these messages out, I try to. But just know that, that's why I'm going to go through these. I won't spend an enormous amount of time, though. Background, really, Story County has participated in the National Flood Insurance Program since the late 70s. We became first mapped in 1983. The National Flood Insurance Program just celebrated its 50th year, was enacted by Congress in 1968. It goes through reauthorizations every year, every other year, depends on congressional acts. But it was set up to identify and map flood hazards nationwide. That does not mean that every jurisdiction, county, or city in the, in the country has, or in the state of Iowa, has a mapped floodplain. That's part of the progress that the National Flood Insurance Program, or NFIP, is hoping to achieve. But it does, through that, have 3 different arms, or ways to approach floodplain, or 3 tiers of approaching floodplains. It's the floodplain management, that's the regulatory aspects, having the ordinance, having the mapping, and then the insurance aspect of things. And when you get into the insurance, that more does then offer, lend itself to having, being a community rating system, which I'll get to shortly. As a, as a participating community in the National Flood Insurance Program, we are required, Story County is required, to do the first 2 ones. We are required to have a floodplain management program, i.e. an ordinance on the books, and issue permits, whatever that entails, and also abide by the mapping. We can disagree with what MAP says, but we have to abide by that map that FEMA develops and puts forward for the Board for Adoption. That's a very important point, especially right now as we're going through some new mapping. We can disagree with the maps, but unless official action is taken by FEMA, we have to go with that map. What is floodplain management? Really, that image kind of says it all. It's protect when whatever actions are being taken, man-made, in the map floodplain, the special flood hazard area, that future development is kind of held harmless, or we minimize the amount of impacts for that development, on future development, rather than whether that would be regrading, realignment, stream channel, riprap, construction itself. The definition of development when it comes to floodplain management is very, very broad, and that is set forth by the National Flood Insurance Program. It is so broad, you can even interpret it to say, if you are digging a hole in the floodplain, that's development. And, and Story County does not take it to that degree. I don't think any jurisdictions do, but the ultimate goal is to make sure that development and future and current development is held harmless. So, the National Flood Insurance Program empowers counties and cities and jurisdictions once they're mapped to have floodplain management programs, but the state of Iowa itself has a floodplain management program. It's set forth through the Iowa Administrative Code, and actually, through that, the DN, it's enforced and managed by the DNR, Iowa Department of Natural Resources. The DNR can then determine whether or not local jurisdictions have local knowledge of what's happening, local expertise, whatever it may be, that they delegate certain levels of responsibility to that jurisdiction. Story County, and they consider those to be delegated communities. Story County is a delegated community. There are 198 county communities, and that includes cities and counties, with detailed studies. So, in that case, they have a floodway and floodway fringe defined. DNR has granted authority of those 198 to 136 communities. What that does is, for us, Story County and those entities wishing a flood, a floodplain permit process, it's not as laborious, it's more local control than having to go through the DNR. DNR is still involved, however. Is there any questions?
So, is our option? Yeah, so it's our option. So, is our option, yeah, so it's our option, not DNR's?
No, the DNR delegates us.
DNR, we apply for delegation? No.
DNR just says you're a delegated community.
So, you win the lottery, and Jerry, you are elected planner of the world, okay? So, you're no longer working for Story County, in those scenarios, all right? And so, we don't have someone to do it anymore. The fact that we're delegated, does that mean we have to hire someone to do it, or get somebody trained? So, we don't get any choice in it?
The question is, can we refuse to be delegated?
Oh, there's where we go to.
I don't think we want to refuse to be delegated.
Okay, but we, okay, thank you.
There are better, more benefits coming with being a delegated community than not.
Okay.
All right.
I don't know if we're arguing with it. We're just wanting to figure out exactly where we stand with it.
And that being said, delegated community, in the scenario that I wholly appreciate and maybe I'll buy a lottery ticket.
So, we'll go back.
The, even though we're a delegated community, if a jurisdiction is suddenly absent of their expertise and their floodplain management personnel, the DNR will assist.
Okay. Thank you.
Then, I mentioned that insurance then leads to community rating system. It is a voluntary program, so where FEMA says this to jurisdictions, Story County, here's your floodplain map. You have properties that are in the floodplain. You must adopt this map, and you must adopt regulations. And if you don't, you become a sanctioned community. And if you become a sanctioned community, those entities that live within your jurisdiction and either are required to have flood insurance as the condition of their mortgage, or want flood insurance, cannot get it. That's the, the ping that FEMA has for counties and cities. If you're mapped, you have to have a floodplain program. You don't have to participate in a community rating system. This is that third element of the tier that's voluntary. In Iowa, up until a couple of years ago, only a few communities, and communities, again, means cities or counties, participate in the community rating system. It is voluntary, and it is when jurisdictions go above and beyond the minimum of the National Flood Insurance Program and what the state requires as well. So, for every step you take up, it's a 5% reduction in flood insurance for those entities that do have flood insurance, in most cases. So, we did the paperwork. It is a lot of work, and there's a reason why there are not a lot of CRS communities in Iowa, when you look and see who is doing floodplain management in the state. For smaller cities, it's city clerks. To apply for this, I couldn't even begin to tell you how many hours I spent to do this. But I'm very proud that we did enter in October 2016. We are a Class VII community. We entered at that, and we maintain that the past three years now, which is the highest we can go, absent some other actions being taken by the Board of Supervisors. Again, it is a goals, four-pronged, to reward communities. You know, we have the nice plaque on the wall, but it's also a marketing point that we can use to enhance different types of development, encourages comprehensive approach to floodplain management, even though we say we can ignore flood insurance. If we ignore it, we're not fully, or we're not looking at floodplain management in a holistic aspect, so it complements those efforts. It does help reduce flood damage, and it strengthens the insurance aspects. So, wrapping back around to what our floodplain management program is in Story County, it is established now through Chapter 80 of the Code of Warnesses, called Floodplain Management Program of the Story County Iowa Code of Warnesses. Section 80.15 is what I want to really discuss right now, though. It is specifically the administration language, and it does note my position. The county outreach and special projects manager is appointed to implement administrative provisions of the chapter, and is the floodplain manager. And then, as complementary to the Code of Warnesses, we have what's called the administrative procedures for floodplain management and regulation. Those are adopted by resolution by the Board, not through a public hearing, and we generally try to bring those to you every other year, just as needed for amendments or just review. That's a little bit more general. We changed that a couple of years ago and just say floodplain manager. I want you to keep those in mind as we talk about the next steps. And it doesn't say who the floodplain manager is. Let me clarify that. Section 80.15 of the Code of Warnesses specifies seven responsibilities and duties of the floodplain manager, with the caveat not necessarily be limited to the following, the other duties as assigned, but it is everything from taking in floodplain applications to the procedural matter of issuing permits, and then more, keeping the records. This is all spelled out in the National Flood Insurance Program Minimum Guidelines, too. We must have an ordinance that adheres to all of these.
How much time do you spend on these seven areas, combined? In other words?
I don't know that I could tell you right now because of the pilot program we've been doing. I could look at the time study I did a year ago.
Okay.
Before we did the pilot program. I, I just don't know right now. How much time do you think you've been spending on? Well, you have multiple people doing it, where I was one person doing it.
Yeah, and actually, lately, we haven't had a lot of applications submitted, and we don't encourage development within the floodplain, but probably at least a few hours a week, you know? I think the last time we looked, we had probably around 10 applications. But with the community rating system, there's a lot of work there that LeAnn does.
I can get back to the Board. When I did a time study a couple of years ago, I did that because floodplain management, I was doing all aspects of that point, including the community rating system, as well as the permitting part of it, so I can get back to the Board on that. It is not a small amount of time, whether you have one or several members of your staff doing it.
And now that we're looking at new maps to adopt, there's been more calls, and I don't know, probably go through the open houses that we did, so that's generating some activity and some buzz to it.
Okay, thank you. So, then, the administrative procedures, taking the next step, too, spell out some additional duties and responsibilities. There's some repetitive, repetitiveness? I don't know if that's correct in this, but it goes a little bit further and talks about serving as a CRS coordinator, which the Board is required to appoint an individual that does, operates in that capacity, talking about the enforcement aspects, which are defined in the Code of Warnesses, but then addressed administratively in the procedures. Other responsibilities related to the program that we don't have, either in the code or the program, or the administrative procedures, looking at Platts' survey and development application reviews, doing public outreach. I have the flood model and the know-year floodplain curriculum with local schools. We do get a lot of mapping requests and general inquiries, especially when building sales are high and transfer of deeds and all that. Providing technical assistance to other jurisdictions, I might come back to at the end of this slide. With the CRS requirements, annually, we must recertify, and that does take quite a bit of work. I'm also coming up upon the time that I need to send information to our repetitive loss structures. Those are, those are the properties in unincorporated Story County that have flood insurance, have experienced losses year after year after year. It's called an RPL, repetitive loss. Mapping changes, as Jerry noted, we're in the process of looking at new maps right now. Kind of winding down on that. We had three very, I think, very well-attended open houses, and a lot of dialogue through that. Ordnance amendments, tracking it from beginning to end, everything that goes with that. Training, I tried to bring in community members and development, development community members in and do training and real estate agents, like every three to five years, on what the floodplain's all about. Annual review and compilation of annexations to FEMA. This is part of the requirement set forth by FEMA that we send this on to them so that they can keep their maps current, and then website maintenance, especially as a key component of our CRS. What's interesting about that, technical assistance to other jurisdictions, Story County Economic Development Group met last Thursday, and there was some direction coming out of that. I wasn't unable to attend. Discussion and requests through them, I think will be coming formally to the Board, that the Board consider, similar to the contracts with animal control and the sheriff's office, operating under a 28E agreement mechanism to provide, that Story County provide floodplain management to some of our smaller communities. We've been doing this informally for years, you know, Nevada, or someone will have a question about a property, they'll call. I do it to Ames. We do it, I do it to Iowa City. We do it, that's the floodplain community. That's how we learn and make sure we're doing, doing best practices. But there will, my understanding, there will be a formal request to come to the Board at some point in the future. So, what we did, starting about a year ago now, in July, we kind of turned this a little bit around and ran a pilot program, where instead, the applications coming right to me and Darla Ingham through the Board's Office, they went right to planning and development, and they really did the initial review and the, I didn't really get involved until it was time to, you know, kind of sign my name on the pre-construction phase permit, which is one, two, three, the fourth and fifth square in there. So, they did the intake. The fees, since I moved from planning and development up to the Board's Office in 2014, have remained, have continued to go to planning and development. So, that process wasn't really new, but they were doing the, the receipting and all that as well. And then, planning and development was doing the inspections, final draft permit issued by PND with me signing off. That being said, I was still reviewing materials. I wasn't just simply signing my name, just working with Jerry and, and coming to complete understanding of our regulations and our approaches. And that was specific for zoning permits and floodplain permits. Planning and development then took the role of providing comments on Platts' surveys and subdivisions and development review cases. I have not done that since the past, since last July. So, from today's meeting, we hope to receive direction from the Board of Supervisors to say, to give us some guidance. Do you like this idea of switching roles? Really, taking this pilot project that we've done and making it more permanent, so with that, shifting the floodplain management, the first two aspects of it, the mapping and the, the regulatory approach to planning and development. I would maintain the community rating system, which would then allow me still have some involvement in the process. CRS is a lot of work, too, and so, I think Jerry hears everything for you guys, is a lot to begin with, kind of dipping toes in a little bit as we go, if that is the Board's pleasure and wish to go. We did develop a timeframe, and that's why I start out by showing the slide at the beginning. Again, I don't think pushing us back a week is putting the timeframe in any, and it doesn't require any modifications. Majority of the steps that go forth, you'll see me presenting that, like the ordinance modifications. There'll be some other changes that we might be doing to ordinance at the same time tied to the watershed assessments, so that's why you see some outreach in, in August. But we would shoot for an implementation date of January 1st of 2020, where I would only do CRM, community rating system, and planning and development then would do basically what they've been doing for the pilot program. You would do outreach? Oh.
You, well, I both have some.
Yeah. Yeah, I wasn't sure if I had another one. Are there any questions? And do you guys have anything you want to add?
I didn't hear Jerry, what you said about outreach.
Well, I, I have outreach responsibilities through our department, and that's something that we envision doing also with LeAnn, through the efforts that she would be planning.
So, you're suggesting outreach is shared, then, or specifically for specific functions?
In general, that's an item on my review to do more outreach, and we've started that with, like, with the home business ordinance amendments that were passed. We did some things in-house here, and we intend to do a lot more of that.
Okay. Questions, Board?
Does he have any firsts? Because I've gone first before. Okay. So, since we don't have the exact time, knowing how much time we're shifting, first of all, over to planning and zoning, we do know that you're busy in PNC, and so, so far, with two planners, set it down to just one right now, but have, Jerry, have you felt that you guys have been able to handle the shift through the pilot program?
I would say absolutely, and everything that we review, zoning permit application, development application, conditional use permit, rezoning request, we're always looking at the floodplain issue, and how well it impact the floodplain. And most of the time, 80, 90% of the time, it's not impacting floodplain. So, you know, when it gets down to the actual review of the applications, that's, that's vulnerable to me, and like I said, there have not been a huge number to review.
Okay.
Generally, we discourage property owners developers to build or to impact our floodplains. You know, with public works improvements, bridge improvements, sewer projects, utility, you can't avoid impacting floodplains. So, probably half of the ones that we've reviewed since we've taken over have been related to public infrastructure improvements, would you say?
It's usually, and I would assume you'd be getting a flurry of them here from Darren and Tyler in the-
'Tis the season.
-in the near future. The vast majority of the, you know, anywhere from a half to two-third annually are Story County projects. I mean, we need to abide by our own regulations for bridges and culverts, and then conservation as well.
Okay. And then, with LeAnn, you keeping the CRS, is that because you are certified to do that, or is that just, you feel it'd be too much of a burden to send it over to PNC?
Well, Jerry and I are both certified floodplain managers.
Now, all right.
And I guess that's something that's important to note. You don't have to be a certified floodplain manager to do an effective floodplain management program, but because we are certified floodplain managers, we do receive, that helps us with our community rating system.
Which then helps our residents with their insurance cost, right? We're down like 30, 35%.
I think, I think knowing, so I, I'll be candid. I mean, I was one person doing the job that, and then a department of several could handle. But I think keeping CRS with me through the transition will keep the history and the institutional knowledge I have. You know, I have been here since 1998, and I've been doing floodplain management since 1991 in Story County, 1999 in Story County. I know the progression that we've gone through the mapping. I think that history, it'd be important for me, keep the CRS for that, until planning and development had solidified their approach. They're going to be going through some changes with their administrative and, and record-keeping.
Oh, okay.
That could be challenging. I, I've got, I have the, as much of a pain as it is, and how you probably don't want to talk to me in December and January, I have the CRS recertification down, and I understand what goes into the points for our CRS, and that is a pretty hefty learning curve to understand those formulas. Not saying Jerry couldn't do it. I think it's a lot to put on planning and development at one point.
Thank you. So, just my questions.
Yeah, so I, I would just, I think, speak to those, and, of course, I appreciate those questions. So, I am so appreciative of, of the way you guys have put this all together, and I think there's multiple reasons to go with this approach. I think we're best served by having two individuals who are certified and then staffed to support that work, way beyond having one person expected to do it all, but then I'm going to talk about it from the other side as well. I believe that not only does LeAnn have a great sense of the history and the process necessary to put us in the best possible position, I think that this matters to LeAnn. I think that this is, while you don't want to talk to her in December, probably, I think, I think LeAnn finds real value in staying involved, and so, since it works both ways, since it's great for Story County and it's great for one of our employees, I think it's a natural that we do it that way. The other thing I'd say is Jerry's task list, you know, stretches way beyond any of our arms, and while it's completely appropriate for the- arms and while it's completely appropriate for the process to flow through the office, I think it's really, really helpful to have an external set of eyes looking at this. So I would support what's being recommended.
So what's being recommended specifically is to have CRS coordinator and floodplain manager appointed two separate individuals, two separate positions. They could be combined again at a later date should we need to do that, or we could, we could appoint one person to serve in both capacities if one of you were to leave, whatever. Correct?
Yes. And I think we can, as depending on the board's direction today, the next step is really for staff to delve in deep at the, in the regulations and procedures. And working with the DNR, the DNR does have to bless this. Working with the Department of Natural Resources, I think we could carefully craft it so that specific positions are not noted. It might be as simple as Story County appoints a floodplain manager and Story County appoints a CRS coordinator, Board of Supervisors appoints it.
That would make a lot of sense. So we wouldn't have to amend it every time somebody, we decided maybe we needed to do something different. Okay.
What we might need to do, though, and I need to get some direction from probably our information, our insurance specialist through the CRS, we may need to specifically, maybe by resolution or some action by the board each year or whenever, if I do win that lottery, know who is a CRS coordinator. I think the procedures themselves and the ordinance can be more vague, but there might be some, am I making sense? There might need to be some specific action on that CRS coordinator.
And that might be annually, but the floodplain manager might not need to be annually. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. That makes, I think that makes perfect sense. So is there any, so are we in agreement on that direction to staff then to proceed down this route?
I'm fine.
Yes.
Any other questions or any?
Just as long as you acknowledge along with us that it will take some time.
Certainly.
We're just going to shoot for December, having it done and implementation for January 1st of 2020. I think that that's doable, but as always, there might be hiccups along the way. Or sooner.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It was a great PowerPoint presentation also because it really helped me understand this program. So thank you.
I can count that for some points.
All right.
Okay. And everybody's leaving except LeAnn staying for the next agenda item as well, AEDC contracts, discussion and direction.
I normally just kind of throw these on the consent agenda, but I want to take the opportunity because Linda, you are newer to the board, just to walk this process a little bit.
Sure. Thank you.
And so it's time of the year that we look at the contracts with the Ames Economic Development Commission. There are two of them. What was attached to your agenda are current ones for this current fiscal year, one for economic development and one for workforce development. What I set forth, I won't go through, but I recommend a schedule in preparation of those fiscal year 2020 contracts. So I would appreciate if you agree with the schedule that by May 2nd, you individually communicate with me if you have any proposed changes you'd like me to build in to the, and that's because that's Thursday in the agenda deadline, build into the contracts. I will bring those forward next Tuesday for discussion and then start the dialogue with not only Ames Economic Development Commission, but also our county attorney. Maybe, they appear later on, but I'll keep Ethan in the loop as early as I can. Given questions?
I have none and since I gave my input a couple of years ago, I guess, and they've stayed this way since and I'm pleased with them and very pleased with the service. Thank you, Dustin and Brenda and Drew and everybody who's come before. But, so I have no questions and I'm fine with them as they sit right now.
Yeah, this is one of the really good things that we do. I think, I think this timeline is appropriate and it's good for all of us to review these and make sure that as, as realities on the ground change, that our contract is continuing to reflect what, what our expectations are and what AEDC's expectations are. And I think this looks like a good, good timeline.
That's all I wanted or needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Upcoming agenda items, we talked about the Iowa games and Rick, give me the contact information.
Sure.
I will make the phone up there. Do we have any other items that we want to plan for the upcoming agenda or agendas besides what's normally coming up?
Just what I announced last week, I understand that the Story County Economic Development Group did discuss coming back here to the board to ask if we could look at redoing the needs assessment and moving that forward based upon the needs that Nevada feels they have now in the east part of the county. And so information will be coming from them, coming to us. So that'll be on an upcoming agenda. I don't know when yet. Haven't had time to talk to Dustin or Drew or LeAnn, I just, but we do know that there's a, they now feel that there's a need out there to not wait and talk to the census.
Okay. Anything else?
Mm-mm.
Okay, then we are at public forum number two, comments from the public. Are any members of the public here that would like to comment? We're all members of the public, so seeing nobody move to the microphone, closed public forum. Liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. Does anybody have any announcements, anything they'd want to?
Looking over, the gentleman in purple first.
Pass.
All right. Well, I do have a few. I went to the Ames City Council meeting last Tuesday night to listen to the discussion about Plan 2040. Staff was asking the council to make a selection about how they now wanted to approach the discussion and research part. One, one way to do it, the option given to the council was that they discuss their overall philosophy and their overall policies first and then look at individual areas where they felt would the growth would likely to occur. The other one was to address the growth areas, the actual individual areas themselves first and then come back and talk about policy and philosophy. There were six areas identified in what would be the fringe or touching the fringe and the council decided that they wanted to look at the specific areas first, the individual areas, and then they'd come back and look overall, maybe at some point about philosophy and policy. Yeah, I, what I would recommend is that, I know that we put a heavy burden on P and Z, but if P and Z staff or someone would like to watch that first hour and 45 minutes of the council meeting, they did talk about how Oklahoma City had done planning before in a couple of other cities. So they gave examples about how it had been approached in other cities the consultant had worked with, but knowing especially that they're looking at individual areas first and there were residents from the southwest area which, who had approached us just a few council, or a few board meetings ago about their concerns about annexation, that we should keep watch on this, that there may be opportunities for us to have, to maybe insert ourselves into the dialogue or at least ask significant questions before we open urban fringe talks. It's, because it sounds like that, that's the direction that they have given to their council. I did present at HERDA's Beyond the Bus Symposium on Public Transit and its role in the workforce and overall emphasized public-private needs and how we are going to have to work together to achieve those. And I appreciated the opportunity to do that. Let's see. I did attend both HERDA and the Community and Family Resource Meetings on Thursday, so I was down in Des Moines and then I was in Webster City. That's my tour of the countryside day. Significant from there is that HERDA's, HERDA has now completed taking over the Dallas County routes themselves. It's HERDA providing directly rather than a contractor and there have been only minor complaints and feedback. HERDA, however, is still running in the negative, about $30,000. We, the executive board, will be meeting before the regular HERDA meeting next month and we will be addressing that with the executive director and we will be taking a look at 30,000 is still, it's a 2 million, $1.7 million budget, but 30,000 as we head into the end of the year is still of concern as we start to take a look at what's going to happen in fiscal year 20. I did not attend the Friday meeting of the Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Board, however, there was nothing on the agenda that caught my attention. Thank you.
Is there, we're near the end of the agenda. There's nothing else there, so.
There's nothing there.
Move the way, Drew.
I'll second.
Okay.
Thank you.